The next item is item number 24. Application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan. Dock at number 15-5263, block 1258, lot 34, 505th Avenue. 505th Avenue building, an individual landmark. An Art Deco style skyscraper designed by Shreve, Lamb and Harmon and built in 1929 to 1931. This is an application to replace storefronts and establish a master plan governing the future installation of windows.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Here's Edith Bellinghausen, Preservation Staff. This is the 505th Avenue building, individual landmark. It's located up on the northwest corner of 42nd Street and 5th Avenue. The applicant is a tenant that is currently at the corner storefront location and also occupies space at the second and third floors. Here you see their current location. They are going to be expanding their space at the 42nd Street elevation to all but two of the two westernmost storefronts and retaining their 5th Avenue location here. The proposal is to establish a master plan for windows at the second, third and fourth floors. The application is also to install new storefront infill. This was not advertised as a master plan for storefronts, but the owner wishes to establish a precedent for the remaining storefronts as there will only be three small storefronts remaining. Just quickly, this is the existing conditions. Everything is grandfathered from prior to designation. This was a recent designation. The ground floor storefronts are all nonhistoric, but they do retain this storefront, I'm sorry, this cornice, which is a feature, a visual feature of the building. The upper floor windows in the tenant's space were replaced in 2008 with this single display and a new framing. The other windows at the upper floors have various configurations with sashes that were replaced, but that do retain this historic mullion which you see passes here through the spandrel. Also of note is that there are existing vitrines at the ground floor and the upper floors, closed displays and this signage that was applied to the glazing. So here is a photo that dates from right around the time the building opened, approximately 1932. And on the right is a rendering of the proposal. The storefront, starting with the storefront, consists of a black granite base, bronze finish metal framing, these large display windows, sliding glass entrance doors both at 5th Avenue and at 42nd Street, and a continuous black glass panel sign band which has internally illuminated inset lettering, translucent. Again, it retains the cornice, which is a feature of the building originally. At the upper floors, the proposed windows go to a divided light configuration reminiscent of the historic configuration and they will feature a custom mullion profile.
Can I just back to the rendering?
The applicant will go in more detail.
Oh, okay.
I'm just hitting some high points and then they'll go into detailing and about this. The, this is just quickly a section of the sign band and its relationship to the cornice and the storefront. This is the framing and prototype. This is again just the axon of the upper windows, again showing how the new spandrels will look. And then lastly, they are proposing a combination of open and closed displays at the ground and upper floors which will have a metal mesh panel behind the glazing and in some locations with signage applied to that. And I'll hand it off to the design team to go into further detail.
Okay, just identify yourself by name, of course, and then add only what you need to add to what's already been summarized, please.
Okay, because I was about to say, do you have any questions?
No, we're ready to do that, yeah. We do, let's go to that.
But we need to go to the rendering.
So my name is Kim Zakeb. I am from the architect's office and we have here Medea Rodriguez from the client, my client, and Luke Kusak from landlord representative.
Okay.
So I think that she explains pretty much the existing conditions pretty well. And before and after.
Just want you to hold on now. Go back to that.
Yeah, hold on, that's the most interesting.
I think I've answered my question by looking, but there's a shadow angle at the corner there on the 5th Avenue side. A big, deep shadow right under the black.
Here?
Could we reduce the lighting?
Right there. And there really wouldn't be a shadow because it looks as if this is an extended marquee.
Oh, yeah, no, it's.
The detail is very much like the original.
Yeah, I mean, there's a shadow there because the column is inside the windowed space or the glazing.
Right.
The glazing turns around the corner.
Thank you, that was my other question.
So some of the original details, the cornice here, original cornice with the glass and illuminated backlit sign. Some of the window or some sort of window detail with the marble base. And these are the pictures of whatever is remaining and is only at the freight entrance elevator which is being relocated for the purpose of the project. This is the 5th Avenue elevation with the sliding doors and the window display as you will see at the end of the presentation, but the, all the mullions are aligned with the upper limestone design of the building. And what you see in the shaded area is set back 18 inches or as far as we can because we can, there's a structural column here in the corner of the building, so everything is set back as much as 18 inches or whatever we could physically do.
Are you building the box tops around those columns or are they existing?
These, well, currently here is a rotating door right at the corner, so no, they're not existing. We're boxing it out to align the window display and create some more closed and controlled area for the mannequins to be able to, for them to be able to present and do the little story on the presentation. What else did I want to talk about? This is a mullion detail at the corner of the, so we have a corner mullion only and a return glazing up to the sliding doors. So this is a typical detail for the entrance area. There is no corner mullion and this is all a glass corner on the 5th Avenue and 42nd Street. The sign band detail with the green cornice and the alignment with the new sign band with the face of the cornice. Mullion detail below, axonometric of that corner. The base will be a granite, a black granite base. And this is a photo of a sample that was built for the, as a prototype to the final result. It's not backlit in this, in this presentation, but the letters would come out. So basically, it's a piece of glass and just a painted white opalescent finish to allow the light to go through. This is at the intersection, this is a detail showing the intersection of the new freight elevator entrance which is pushed back all the way to, to separate Zara with the two remaining tenants at the end of the 42nd Street. The landlord has agreed to mimic this, the detail of the entrance to match Zara's design. This is the second floor existing or not existing anymore, but original condition where you see the verticality of these members. Obviously, this is area is painted green and this area is also painted green, but the steel element is continuous through the windows. And we have, this is a detail of that section through which shows the, a little bit of detailing of the cladding. This is the green spandrel that I was referring to in the elevation. So there's a metal spandrel that's historical that's remaining and we're coming in treating the top and bottom of that. So this is the new proposed elevation. We're not changing the fourth floor because it's not part of the store at this time. So whenever the landlord would want to upgrade, they would upgrade to whatever we're proposing for these windows at the top. So the, the vertical element, the cladding would put, re-put an element that is continuous. Again, this would be painted green to match the existing, but it would be a continuous detail here that we see a vertical element throughout the three floors. And then the horizontal mullion is much different, set back and it's just basically a rectangular tube. In this section, we see on the third floor that some of the windows displays will have a back, will be backed with a glass system also. And this is a section through the second floor where we have this metal mesh that's illuminated. You will see a little bit further in the presentation.
Then actually, if you could just stay on that slide, because I think, I wanted to make something clear. Commissioner, if you look at page six in your handout, you'll see a zoom in cleare of the historic spandrels. You can see that there is a sort of flat piece in the middle of the historic spandrel that carries the line of the mullion above and below. And in the proposed scheme, they would be removing that piece out of the historic spandrel to do a new mullion that would carry through to the new windows.
Am I correct that? We're not removing anything, we're putting on top because we verified the condition and I don't know when the cladding piece was removed, but right now it's just a simple steel tube that has been deleted. So what we're proposing is to replat on top of the existing steel tube remaining. Can you point to what we're talking about?
Where's the steel tube that we're talking about?
Sorry.
That's the spandrel, right?
It's, it's really hard to see because I think you'd see it better if, if you go to page six, but.
Page six, yeah.
So this is the second floor?
We see it here, sorry.
So you're saying that one does not have the profile on it that's shown on the archival drawing that you found?
That's right.
With that little stepping thing, that's not there?
Yeah, no. It's not there, so I'm not sure when it was removed or, but this is a steel.
That's interesting.
Like a solid steel tube.
On the interior, but this is a metal cladding. This, this is a historic element inside is a steel, structural steel tube. So what you're proposing is to replace the cladding material.
I, yeah, I think it's, you know, I went, I poked through there, there's one piece that has a hole. I was with Luke and really, there is nothing, it doesn't seem like we can remove anything from that steel tube. Now, you know, when we actually demolish that, we might find something else, but my findings were that there was really.
So it's an integral structural system. So it's the steel, when you say steel tube, that it's this express?
Yes.
Okay, so that is being removed and a new profile is being introduced.
I'm keeping the steel tube and I'm putting a cladding on top of it.
And what, and the cladding is a different profile?
The cladding is, is very slightly different.
Where is that? Is that between the first and the second floor or the second?
This is in between second and the third.
What floor was that?
So we're talking about this vertical piece here and this is the detail, this is on page 14. This is the detail that is on the original drawings. Like I said, I, this, to me at this point, it looks like it's a steel, plastic steel tube. And there's, you know, nothing that I can go in and remove, but we're proposing to, to add. And actually, the detail is reversed, so this is set back and this comes out. The new detail is at the, sorry, it's at the top here, so it comes out and it's set back.
Now, what is the reason for changing that detail there?
Because it mimics what we did on the ground floor, the proposal of the mullion for the ground floor. If I go back to, so the, the ground floor is also a recessed detail. I can, so it's the same detail that we're proposing for the ground floor where it is set back.
Okay, Edith, when you say you mimic what you did on the ground floor, where on the ground floor? You're talking about at the windows, the storefront windows?
Yes, that's right.
Just mimicking something, the mullions of the.
The mullions of the.
Starting. But it doesn't, doesn't have to.
No.
On page 111.
Proposing a master plan.
And we will see it in the plan. So these are the location of these mullions, here, 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 here.
Say that again, they're where?
And yours are stamped bronze now, stamped material bronze coated where the originals were cast bronze with a decorative element in the center, right?
That detail, that original detail, I believe it was cast bronze, yes.
Yeah.
Right now, what we're looking at, the finish is, this is the finish that we're proposing.
No decoration at all, just plain.
That's right. It still has some sort of metallic feel to it.
And you're putting like little moldings on the edges of it, right?
Yes, that's it. I mean, this is just a sample of the finish, but.
Right, so the real thing would have this little kind of cove molding type thing at the corner.
Yes, that's right. It's a detailing. We had a large sample.
So the additional handout is a photograph of the.
Of the sample.
Sample that they did. The, the framing of the storefront is recessed and it has articulation to it, it's not flat. But it doesn't have the same articulation that was in the original storefront which is sort of that curved molding. But there is an articulation which is shown here in the axon and in the photograph on the single sheet that was, you see here, on the edging of this piece here.
And then I'm going to address the, the window displays. So as inspiration, we use the Rockefeller Center display windows where they mix the closed display windows with the mannequin presentation and open display windows where they still have the mesh, mesh with some sort of visibility into the store, but a closed, somewhat closed condition. And this is a typical elevation of showing that. So these are where we, the metal mesh panels would be. This is simple drywall columns that would be painted to match the color of the season. And then this is what the, these metal mesh system or panels would look like. And you see them, they're set, they're not like full width, but set back, set in the. Demonstrate that and it's illuminated on the perimeter. Again, this is the second floor, 5th Avenue, where we see some visibility to the fitting room area, some closed with the metal mesh panels. And then this is a comparison of the, of the existing condition where we see the rotating door, the corner and the new entrance. And so whatever is in green is closed and whatever is in blue is see-through. This is the second floor, whatever we see in green is closed currently, whatever we see in blue here is open. Again, before and after opening some of these windows on the third floor. And the 42nd Street plan view in the elevation of the second floor. I'm sorry, this is the ground floor, no, second floor. At the top here, you have the ground floor, the existing condition and the new condition. Obviously, these were all other tenants before with different window displays. And again, 42nd Street on the third floor. And this is the final elevation, this is the existing elevation and this is the new proposed elevation. I mean, this comes out really dark, but it's, it's glass. And the 42nd Street elevation, existing elevation and new proposed elevation.
I have a question. Just about those, the mullions from up above. So what would happen if you actually tried to keep them, right? You're saying you can't keep them because you want them to be in the same vertical location as the first floor?
No, we are keeping them, but we are cladding them.
But why, okay, so why are we.
The reason why we're cladding them, because they're steel and it's very difficult to maintain and it would have to be painted.
But they're, they're, you're maintaining them up above.
Up above, you mean in the windows that we're not changing?
They run through the windows, they go up.
Yes, but they would be eventually all cladded.
So you don't want to keep any of the original, you don't want to see any of the original.
We don't want to see any of the steel, just exposed steel, no.
Are these mullions the same material as the spandrels to the left and right?
The spandrels, you mean these things?
The things that you're going to cap, right?
Yeah.
They're running through a green zone. That green zone is made of what?
It's, it's made of steel also.
So even if you were to cladd them, you'd still be maintaining those stuff to the left and right, right?
Yes, that's right.
And you control the entire, you don't control the entire front inch, right?
No, where there's, on the, on the ground floor, we go all the way to the end, sorry, on the second floor, we go all the way to the end. And on the third floor, we stop at this window.
So that means the other ones will still be the exposed steel.
Yes, this, this will be the original windows, but the plan is not proposed to have a master plan.
This is a master plan.
As they will be renovated, they will be treated the same way as, as the other ones below.
So the plan is, so it's for the entire building or the street front that's occupied by this building? So your idea is that it all changes, just not now, but it all changes. But in the meantime, you'll, you'll be looking at some very thick pieces and some very thin pieces and so the thin mullions versus the thick ones?
The variation in thickness is really not that, that great. If we go back to, to this page, page 15, we're just cladding really tightly on top of it. So whatever is, you see these little two pieces are white, this is what's going to come out. So it basically increases the verticality of the element that is existing there. But it's really tightly cladded to the existing steel.
Okay, any other questions before we go to testimony and try to wrap this up? Okay, Barbara Say, please.
Barbara Say of the Historic District Council. At the ground floor, HDC questions the wrapping of the corner pier at 5th Avenue and 42nd Street in glass rather than leaving it exposed. Our committee found the changes to the storefront to be otherwise sensitive. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other testimony? Okay, anything further to say based on what was just said?
I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
We were just questioning.
You want to go up there again to the mic and try to listen, please, or try to turn the air conditioning down or something? So we want to.
I'll just speak up.
Yeah.
We were just questioning the wrapping of the corner at 5th Avenue and 42nd Street in glass rather than leaving the pier exposed. That was our main concern.
You don't have to comment on that. I'm asking you, if you wish to, you may.
Okay.
Thanks, Barbara.
Try to understand what. I think the original building had glass right around, wrapping around the corner. So we're just going back to whatever was existing.
Okay, discussion, then Michael Goldblum, please.
Okay, I think it's in general a good proposal that's, that's fairly sensitive to the, to this individual landmark. I think that the storefront design, including the granite base and the aluminum mullions are, are appropriate. I think that the staff could work with the applicant perhaps on the profile of those vertical articulated or the articulated mullions, which strike me from the mock-up as being rather harsh and indelicate. But I think that it's a matter of detail. And I think that another way to go on that is you do have an available mullion from the existing in the service entrance that could be cast and used as a template for, for these, which would be really, I think, really great for this individual landmark to use as a basis, but not necessarily so. I think that the upper floor window master plan is, is a great idea and that the general design of those windows is appropriate. I think that the, once again, the issue comes down to this vertical mullion that goes to and eventually three floors. I think there's some lack of clarity between what the staff's observations are of this particular element and what the applicant's view of it is. And I think that they can work with the staff to determine what it is. If in fact, the vertical tube that traverses the spandrels is not the original profile as shown in the drawings or as discernible from, from other documentation, then I'd be okay with having it covered by a new profiled vertical mullion. If however, it is the original and it does have some profile to it and integrity, then I think that simply the applicant should have their mullion match what is existing.
Well said. I'm glad I didn't have to say it and I won't repeat it, but I agree with it. But I wanted to say one more thing. I think the, you're very close to having the original profile except that the sign panel itself is outboard of the glass. The original detail which is shown to us on page, whatever it was, page 10, clearly shows that that sign panel is, is coplanar with the glass. I think it can easily be moved in, otherwise fine.
I agree with the comments of Commissioner Goldblum and Commissioner Bland. And I don't think I need to say anything further, except that in general, I think that the plan is fine with those modifications.
Ditto.
Say yes?
Ditto.
Ditto.
Same comments, I experienced those comments about where the sign band is, looking at that. And.
Profile.
The profile, yes. I mean, I guess, because what it looks like is that the drawing showed it to be what was being presented here, but what was built was something else. So what was built then is, is the original as far as, I mean, even if it was drawn and not built a certain way, I think that I'd go with the way it was built as the original. So I would ask them to work that out.
So I would ask them to work that out.
I agree. Appropriate design and working with staff will improve it.
Michael?
I, I agree with most of my colleagues' comments. I think Fred's comment about the sign band actually is, is really relevant, that you would, you would make it easier upon yourself to, to pull it back. With regard to that molyneum, the, the drawing shows clearly the tube and a cap that's applied, and that, that applied cap actually becomes a seal for the window surrounds at each of those levels. And I think with a little more site investigation, you could, you could determine what the deal is there, and come up with a proper solution with staff.
Okay, so hearing will close. Motion, second, Michael Goldblum, put that into words, please. Further words?
All right, regarding five hundred Fifth Avenue, an individual landmark, the application is to replace storefronts and establish a master plan governing the future installation of the windows. I recommend approval with modifications. Finding that the implementation of a master plan for storefronts and windows will bring uniformity to the commercial ground floor and to the fenestration, the removal of the existing storefront signage, and signage will not eliminate historic fabric with the configuration of the four storefronts, consisting of a stone-based large display windows, metal framing, and continuous glass sign band recalls the historic storefronts and will help return this individual landmark closer to its historic appearance. That the metal articulated storefront framing and molynes are reminiscent of the historic detail as documented by historic drawings, the black glass sign band, with internally illuminated translucent lettering is reminiscent of the historic sign as documented by historic drawings, and that the letters are proportional to the size of the sign band, that the proposed signage will be well scaled to the storefronts, and the cumulative amount of signage will not overwhelm the building or streetscape, that the sliding glass entrance doors, West Forty Second and Fifth Avenue, will maintain the street wall and transparency at the base of the building, the materials, details, and finish of the storefront infill will be harmonious with the building's facade and are based on materials historically found in the building, that the overall effect of the proposed window latrines will result in a net gain in the amount of transparency when compared to the existing condition, that the illuminated mesh screens will create an illusion of depth within the enclosed displays, and enliven the open displays without compromising transparency, that the configuration of the material and material of the windows with subdivided glazing, metal window framing, and molynes are reminiscent of the historic details documented by the historic drawings, that the modified window configuration at the second southernmost bay at the Fifth Avenue elevation, and the easternmost bay at the West Forty Second Street elevation, maintain molynes, that subdivide the glazing, and that this subdivision is consistent with the proportions of the original windows, and that the flush-mounted louver will be installed within a window frame at an existing second floor window opening at West Forty Second Street elevation, that it will be finished to match the fenestration, and that the installation will not damage or destroy any significant architectural features of the building. However, I recommend that the applicant work with the staff to determine the existing profile at the spandrels of the continuous vertical molynes, and that, that, that the design be modified to reflect what is found there, whether it is existing or has been modified, and that the applicant work with the staff to look at the profile and design of the molynes for the storefront level, to have them better simulate or recreate the extant, original molynes in that location.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed, that's approved, work with the staff, thank you.